Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting at Southbridge Middle High School. We're in the library today, one of my favorite places. Checked out the book, so all is good here, okay? Going to pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim Messier.
Present.
Aaron DeMillo.
Present.
Kathy Lapiore. Andrew Murch is excused. Spiro Thomo is excused. And Wally McKenzie is excused. We do have a quorum of four, so we will begin the meeting. We have no minutes right now. Next, we're going to adjourn for a few minutes and we're going to take a walk around the building and see what our students are doing. That was the reason that we came to the middle school and the high, well, it's the middle high school, I'll get that right someday. We're going to go around and look at what some of the after-school programs are. So, we will be, we will return. Welcome back. I know that the cameraman came with us for our tour. It was amazing. We watched two groups of after-school Century 21 students, and I found a young lady who, in the, in the room, they were working on games, and she can play chess, and I'm amazed. It is, it is so great to see our kids working and, and behaving perfectly. Now, we're going to have a citizens forum. Do we have any comments from any of the people who are with us today? Nope. I'll ask one more time, anything for citizens forum? Thank you. Now, we're going to have a presentation by Principal Jeff House on our middle high school, particularly the middle school. He is the principal of the middle school. Mr. House?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. House, just before we begin, I just want to give a little context. When I came to the district in 2018, everywhere I went, the middle school was the concern, and rightly so. There were a lot of issues in our middle school. While the middle school today is not by any means perfect, it's 180 degrees different, complete turnaround, and I credit that largely to, well, obviously, the work of the teachers at the middle school, but the leadership that Mr. House has brought to that group. There's a significant cohesion, and he's brought together a strong leadership team. Ms. Hool's here with him today, and maybe at some point during the year, members of this group can come back with me to see full school in session, because it's really quite amazing just how good classrooms are running and how strong our teachers are in our middle school. I would put it against any middle school, to be quite honest. It's really, really a great school, and I, I credit that again to great leadership, excellent staff. This group works really hard for what's good for kids. To that said, I'll let Mr. House take over.
All right. Well, thank you for those nice words. And it is about teachers, so shout out to Ms. Hebert, one of our teachers is here, and Jackson Reed, one of our seventh graders, whose grandmother's here. So, it's like teacher, students, leadership, all of us together. I'm going to try to be brief in this presentation, and then leave some time if you have any questions. I put together a long presentation with a lot of data, because I love to talk about our school. Dr. Villar advised me to pare it down a little bit, so.
Sixty.
So, I made my, I did, I did the best I could, and I'll try to be brief. So, just wanted to start by sharing with you kind of where we are as a school. This is my third year here as the principal, so when I first came, first we were, well, we were trying to reopen after COVID, so that was a big challenge. And then, I, I heard a lot when I came and talked to teachers and staff coming in about past challenges of the school. And so, we just wanted to initially focus on reopening after COVID and establishing a strong, stable school with basic systems. I think we've done that really well over the last few years. And so, this year, our priorities and goals are all about us taking a next step. So, this year, we set three priorities as a school. The first being to develop excellent teaching, so I appreciate Dr. Villar, shout out to our teachers. We do have some really good teachers in the middle school. And active student engagement. I think last year, we, we got to where our students were, were well behaved, and we had a very safe school environment, but our students weren't as actively academically engaged as we want them to be. So, that's a big focus this year. And then, we put a stake in the ground that this year, we want to get the majority of our students to at or above grade level proficiency in literacy and math. So, we, we want to, we want to send kids to high school that are reading at and above grade level, that are ready to do high school work, and that know the math you need to know to enter into ninth grade, and some of them take honors track classes in high school. We're working to also have an excellent school climate, like the results don't matter if, if kids aren't having a good experience as kids. So, we look at, as attendance is obviously very important, if we have a great school program, but kids aren't here, they're not benefiting. So, we're striving for 96% student attendance. Candidly, you'll see in our data, we're only averaging about 92% so far. So, we're still, you know, recovering from, I think, some school disengagement that happened during COVID, and past patterns of lower attendance in our school, but our attendance is increasing. We want to get to 96%. And then, we also care a lot about how do kids feel about school. So, we do student surveys every quarter. We want to get to where 85% or more of those responses are positive, so no kids like school, they're having a good experience here. And then, last but not least, we want to increase the pathways for students and families to have leadership and ownership in our school, and I'll share a little bit about that. So, this is one where I could bore you, and I'll just try to be brief. Ms. Hool, who's here, she's our associate principal. She's the leader of our literacy efforts, but we have put in place some things that are, that are making a difference in raising reading scores. So, we put in place a reading block, where kids read independently in school every day to increase time in text. That's made a big difference. That's something we're going to keep doing. Ms. Hool has worked with a group called Hill for Literacy, who are literacy experts, to coach not just our literacy, not just our English teachers, but also our reading intervention teachers, ESL, science and social studies, and some common literacy strategies. So, we're teaching reading comprehension, vocabulary, and other core literacy strategies through all our subjects throughout the day. That's something we're going to keep doing, and so there's weekly PD around that. And then, Ms. Hool spends a lot of her day in classrooms coaching teachers, and so we just think that coaching developing each teacher is a key to almost, is, is a key to almost any initiative we do. So, there are things we're doing that have been successful, but there's some things we need to still improve. So, we have not had enough students showing us their finishing books in reading block by completing reading logs and book reviews, so that's something we're prioritizing right now. We are really focused this year on the growth of our second language learners. Their literacy was lagging our native speakers a bit, so we want to see as much growth from that group. So, we are just doing a lot of things to improve our ESL systems this year. And then, we have a reading intervention program that gives us a lot of data about kids' reading levels. We have the data, we track the data, but we want to do more to act on the data, give kids individualized support. So, we believe we're on track, that by the end of this year, we'll have the majority of our kids reading at and above grade level. We'd love it to be all of our kids, but that's come a long way from where we were, and we're heading in the right direction. And then, in math, so we, one thing maybe to know about the middle school, we changed our math curriculum this year, not radically, but we moved to a program called Ready Math. It's a lot, it's basically the same curriculum that the elementary schools use. So, we were using a different curriculum in middle school from elementary school, so there's a little lack of continuity, and we also just looked at both and thought the Ready Math curriculum was better. So, we made that switch, and it's helping our math results improve this year. We also have a outside partner who's worked with us on eighth grade math. I like to be modest about our school, but sometimes we've got to brag about it, because our kids are doing great things. We had some of the highest growth of schools in the state in eighth grade math last year. Among comparison districts with similar demographics to Southbridge, we had the most growth in eighth grade math. So, we had a 68th percentile growth score, which means the vast majority of our students were, had a rate of growth in the top quartile of students in the state in eighth grade math. So, we are excited, and so we're on an upward trend in math, but I think the pandemic was part of it. Math, we have a bigger hill to climb. It's, we have farther to go to get the majority of our kids to grade level, so we're working still really hard. We, this year, are trying to take some of those things that worked so well in eighth grade last year with this outside partnership group called Apollo Math, and we're trying to put those same strategies into sixth and seventh grade to get as much growth there. The other thing we're doing is trying to do more assessments on a weekly or close-to-weekly basis. We can't just wait for big tests at the end of units to see if we're making that growth in math with as much growth as we need to make. So, to show you an example, this is our eighth grade that made the most growth. In this, the orange line shows their quiz scores through the first nine weeks, and we're still doing this now that we're in quarter two. Every week, they take a quiz on what they learned that week, and this shows their average scores. The orange is last year, and the blue is this year. So, the orange last year, this was, these students, those students had the highest growth of any comparison district in the state, and this year's eighth graders are doing better, which is exciting. Another way that we look at it is what percent are scoring proficient on those weekly quizzes. Again, last year, you can see our numbers there. This year's numbers are much, much higher, and we're especially, so you can see, this is another way of looking at it, just this year's trending ahead of last year in eighth grade math. And one thing I'll say about this too, what's exciting is, this year, we had more students in seventh grade that were on grade level last year, so we have 25 kids who are taking algebra in the eighth grade this year. That's something the school hasn't had for a while, and so we're excited we brought that back. Those kids didn't take these quizzes, and those are our highest performing students in the whole grade. So, if those kids were also taking these quizzes, we think our proficiency is actually even higher compared to last year. So, that's something we're excited about. And then, these are some kids at a party we had right at the end of October to celebrate kids who made progress in mastering their multiplication facts. This is something in sixth and seventh we identified that held our kids back in past years. They, they didn't know their multiplication facts. If you don't, you can't be successful, and so many other skills. So, we started doing weekly quizzes on those facts and just weekly study, some structured study programs around those facts. So, those, you can see here, our, we did, our weekly quiz scores have been going steadily up. It's something we're going to do throughout the year until we hopefully get to where the vast majority of our kids know almost all of their facts. There's lots more we're working on. Obviously, multiplication facts isn't the only thing, but this is just one example of how we're trying to identify the skills our kids are missing, track data, and celebrate progress. These are some of our sixth graders, where we also saw a lot of improvement in multiplication facts. And we think this big push this year, we, we won't have to do this next year in seventh grade or eighth grade because of the work we're doing this year in sixth grade and seventh grade. We can take on the next thing. Also want to share, in addition to, so I'll share just anecdotally some reading data. Reading data, every quarter, we test kids' reading levels with a standardized assessment that tells us where they rank, like are you on grade level compared to peers, are you above grade level or below? Right now, we're at about a third of our kids are scoring at or near grade level, but that's more than we were, much more than we were a year ago, so we're confident by the end of the year, we'll get that to 50% or higher. Each quarter, we test. Each quarter, the number of kids below grade level has been shrinking, the number of grade level, kids at grade level increasing, and we think it's having reading intervention for all kids, having reading block every day where they have independent reading time, and then the work Ms. Hool's doing, that we teach literacy in all our subjects. So, those are academic things we're excited about. And then, the other thing that's important is our school climate. So, hopefully, you saw when we toured classrooms, some kids that seemed pretty happy, pretty well behaved, you know, feel positively and represent our school positively. That's just as important to us. So, key metrics we track are attendance data, classroom environment data, and stakeholder satisfaction. So, quickly to share those data points. Attendance, you can see that a year ago, at the end of the first quarter, we were at 90% attendance. This year, at the end of the first quarter, we were at 92% attendance. So, we're creeping our way up, but we're not at the goal we set, which is 96% attendance. So, we're getting there. Our staff attendance, I'm really proud of. We've had 97% staff attendance. That's another big piece of our academic growth. When kids have their teacher and not a substitute teacher, it's a better school experience. They make more growth. So, our staff attendance is also a driver of our progress. Another way that we're looking at attendance is not just the overall average percent, but it actually matters more kid by kid. So, this graph shows you, kids in the green have 96% or higher daily attendance. So, you can see on the left, this year's eighth graders, 44% of them have 96% or higher daily attendance. So, almost half our kids in eighth grade actually have really good school attendance. Research shows that once you pass 96%, attendance is no longer holding you back. That's a big improvement. If you look on the right side of the graph, the same group of students when they were seventh graders last year, coming out of the pandemic, only 28% of them had 96% or higher attendance. They're having better attendance this year, which we think will lead to more growth. At the same time, if you look at that graph, you see a large red. That means less than 90% attendance rate. You're missing more than 10% of school days. We still have a big group of students that fall in that category, so that's something we need to, to really address and improve. This is just a similar look at seventh grade. Seventh grade, we're at the majority of, 50%, half the kids having strong 96% or higher attendance, but you still see 27% that are below 90% attendance rate. That's not good. However, it's all better than it was a year ago, so we're trending up in attendance. In sixth grade, we can't compare to their fifth grade data. We don't have that, because they, that was in the other schools. But, you can see, compared to our sixth graders a year ago, this year's group has the highest attendance rate, and shout out to West Street and Charlton Street, they're doing something well to prepare kids, because our sixth grade group has the highest school attendance. They have the best attendance habits of any of our students, which is great. And so, we're doing some things to try to improve attendance this year. It is still an area for growth. On the positive side, every day at the end of the day in announcements, we shout out the grade that had the highest attendance for the day to get some friendly competition in the school. Every month, we have assemblies, and we give awards to our students who have perfect attendance that month. So, we want to notice and recognize those kids who are coming to school every day, which is getting close to being the majority of our kids. At the same time, when kids are frequently absent, we have tiers of attendance intervention. The biggest thing we do, if kids fall below that 90% rate, is two things happen. One, they get a daily phone call anytime they're absent. So, we, our staff call home, trying to problem solve, why aren't you in school today? Is there anything we can do to support you? And then, we also hold attendance meetings with those families where they have, we have them come in, and we just meet and try to problem solve and see what it would take to engage that kid in a more regular habit of being in school. There is a tier three. The attendance meetings can get more serious and involve administration such as myself, or, you know, we sometimes appeal to outside agencies if there's like real chronic absenteeism, but that's, we don't think the most important thing. When we arrive at those steps, like that's a family that's really struggling, we want to catch kids earlier. So, it's those tier one and tier two that I think, we think are the most important. Then, the other data point, I mentioned classroom environment, and that's a tricky thing to measure. So, we have, thanks to Dr. Villar and the funding we get, being in, getting special funding from the state. We have a consultant from a group called School Empowerment Network. He comes at least once a week, and he observes in all our classrooms. I appreciate his observations, because I always wonder, if I go observe in a classroom, am I seeing how they really behave, or am I seeing how you behave when the principal's in the room? Which isn't quite the same, right? But, by having an outside consultant who someone they don't know, we're just getting an honest picture. So, one of the biggest things he tracks is he has a set of look fours, like how positive is the learning environment? It includes things like how engaged are the kids, how actively do they participate, how positive in tone and like emotional frequency are the interactions between students and students and students and teachers, and is there any disruptive or misbehavior or not? And so, based on that, like, it's on a five-point scale, so a three would be like an average classroom, not great, not terrible. Four is like trending towards positive, and five would be like your perfect classroom. One or two is the area we'd obviously want to not be in. So, last year, in quarter one, we were a little above a three. This year, we're almost at that level of a four. So, we, we really trended up in terms of positivity of our classrooms, and 95% of our kids are on task at any given time. We're still trying to grow the rate of like really active participation. So, that's something we, we focus on, and where at school, we focus a lot on data. We believe anything that's important to change, we've got to find a way to measure it by observing it so that we can celebrate progress. And we're more interested in, where we are is where we are. We're always honest about it. We're not going to pretend to be where we're not, but we can always get better. From where we are, we can get better. So, we want to be at 96%. We could beat ourselves up that we're at 92% attendance, or we could celebrate the fact that we've moved from 88 a couple of years ago to 92, and if we can do that, we can get to 96. So, that's how we, we try to look at it. And then, the other thing is quarterly surveys. So, satisfaction, how positively do students and staff feel about school? So, in our quarter one, we had a 73% student satisfaction rate, so 73% of them answered questions positively on average as opposed to neutral or negative. We want that to be 85 is our goal, but that's up from 67% last year. So, we, again, we're trending up. Our staff satisfaction has been really high, 94%. It was 95% last year. So, we have, I think, a pretty satisfied staff and an increasingly satisfied group of students. Middle school's a tough audience, but we can get to 85%. We believe we can. Last but not least, family and community and student engagement. So, this year, we, this school has not had for a while a parent leadership council. We think it's really important to have parent voice in our schools. Martina actually joined us for one of the parent meetings. That was, that was very nice to have you there. So far, we've had five parents actively participating. We've had two meetings so far. A couple of those parents attended our last PBS meeting. It's Positive Behavior Intervention Supports, our school climate approach. So, having parent voice in those meetings together with our staff is really important. And then, in our very first meeting, it was disappointing, we only had one parent come out. But, again, we believe in progress, so we didn't give up. We sat with that one parent, said, what could we do to get more parents at the next one? And so, we designed a survey, asking parents in their top three areas of concern regarding the school. We sent it out to families. We got the results. They said they're most concerned about reducing bullying, improving how we manage behavior in schools, and improving our communication to parents. So, we framed our next meeting as being around that, and we got more parent involvement. And we got some really good suggestions from parents as well. So, we think that by continuing to sort of get in that cycle, if we listen to parents, what do they care about? Create a way for them to have voice in those things they've said they care about. We think we'll grow parent engagement over time, and it's just going to make our school better. And then, the area of student leadership, we have a group called Star Ambassadors. This is a picture of them doing a food drive at the Big Bunny Market. We collected a bunch of food for local families, including families in our own school in need, as well as donating to the local food pantry. They've also done things, like they, they help do things beautifying the school within the school, helping teachers with jobs within the school. They've also collected blankets and, and things for an animal shelter. They're just like a great group of kids who just want to do positive things, and so, we're proud of them. They definitely represent our star values, which are safety, teamwork, achievement, respect, and responsibility. And then, we are proud to be starting soon in January, a chapter of the National Junior Honor Society. So, again, it's something the school hasn't had, but we have a lot of kids that are ready for that and deserve to be in it. So, we're going to start with a seventh and eighth grade chapter, right, this year?
Six, seven, and eight.
Six, seven, and eight, okay. What it began, really, it's, the way it's meant to begin is that in the second semester of your sixth grade year, you can join National Junior Honor Society and then remain in it, possibly all the way through Honor Society and high school. But, since we're starting it new, we're just going to start with sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and then, going forward, new kids will be inducted each year in their second semester of sixth grade. So, maybe a great kid like Jackson will, will want to join. So, that's it, and these are our five core values. You, so you hear a lot about stuff about STAR when you talk about our school, or when you see things affiliated with our school, you see our STAR logo. It means safety, teamwork, achievement, respect, and responsibility. When I came here as a principal, we had three values, safety, respect, and responsibility, and those things, I think, are really important, but we just wanted those values to be more active, to say our kids also can achieve, and we can actively do things as a team, not just be safe, respectful, and responsible, which to me implies like compliance, but we can be actively great citizens, so we just add the teamwork and achievement. So, that's it. I hope I didn't go too long, and happy to answer any questions or not.
I'll start with one question. Being a former librarian, a former reading teacher, this reading block where the students just read, how does that work?
So, Sarah, do you mind answering that question? Like, you've created the reading block in our school. You should answer it.
So, it works.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, it actually works quite well. We started it last year. There was a substantial amount of planning that went into it over the summer, so we had, we formed a literacy committee at the middle school, which was teachers who volunteered their time to be part of this. We made a huge purchase to fill out classroom libraries in every classroom, and what we did last summer was we physically handled probably tens of thousands of books, like literally, and we labeled every single one with a classroom number and a Lexile. And then, what happens is the students take their reading inventory, like Mr. House mentioned a few times over the course of the year. They get their Lexile, they write their Lexile number on a bookmark, and then, their teachers work with them to say, what are you interested in? What do you want to read about? Let's go over to this bookshelf in our classroom, and the bookshelves are arranged by Lexile bands. And so, if your Lexile is, say, 850, you can go either 100 points above or below. Here's the couple shelves of those books, and have at it, take a few minutes, and kind of look through and pick a book. And then, the rule of thumb is usually they keep the book for at least two or three days and give it like a real honest go. If they absolutely hate it, then a couple days later, they say, listen, I tried this, and it's just not for me, can I switch it out? Or, they read the whole thing. At the end of it, they do a book review, which is they give it a couple stars, write about kind of a plot summary, show us that they finished the book. They get entered into a raffle if, for each book that they finish, and then, we celebrate those at our, our monthly assemblies. And so, we have a student who gets up and reads their book review to kind of promote the book and says, if you like this topic or this genre, you might like this book for reasons X, Y, and Z, and then, we pull a winner from the basket of raffle tickets for all the kids who read it. A lot of the classrooms will do things, like they'll play really soft music, they might shut one of the lights off, kids can sit comfortably and read. It's about 25 minutes. It's a 30-minute block of time, but by the time the kids get their books and get settled, it's about 25 minutes, and it's just a really positive learning environment. I think because we spend so much time on the backend, kind of structuring it and teaching the students why we're doing it, right? We had some very honest conversations with students around, you should have a Lexile that's about 1,000 to be high school-ready. Here's what your Lexile actually is. This is how much it has to grow, and in order to grow it, reading is just like a sport. It's like baking, it's like, you know, anything else you do, you got to practice, and then you'll get better. And so, you know, not every kid loves it, but every kid does participate in it, and for the most part, it was positively received.
I'd say more kids love reading now than before.
Yep. The other thing that we do when we test quarterly for their Lexile level, we also give a reading habit survey to students. So, it asks them to rank kind of on a five-point scale, similar to some of the data we just looked at from Mr. House. How do you feel about reading? How often do you read outside of school? And so, very slowly, we're starting to see some growth. It took a little while. Last year, the numbers were very stagnant in terms of students just didn't feel very positively towards reading, but what we're seeing with the same survey on the year-over-year data is there is some movement in a positive direction.
So, you are using the Lexile reading system, the score?
Yes.
That would, for, for those of you out there in TV land, that is a, how difficult is this book to read so that you don't have kids reading first-grade books when they should be reading 12th-grade books, and they're not reading 12th grade, trying to read a 12th-grade book when they should be just reading a 6th-grade book, which for them would be grade level?
Any other questions?
I, I have some. All right. So, I wanted to talk about the parent leadership council. How often are you planning on meeting with them?
So, right now, we have, we're committed to doing monthly meetings this year. Our vision for it is to provide a structure, so we have a teacher, Mr. Vasquez, who's our parent leadership coordinator, and then, myself. So, I'm committed to attending all the meetings, and Mr. Vasquez is helping organize it, but our hope is we'll get to a point where like parents elect, you know, like a president But our hope is we'll get to a point where like parents elect, you know, like a president of the Parent Leadership Council and a secretary. And then they can decide, how often do they want to meet? What projects do they want to work on? Do they want the principal to be at all the meetings or have some meetings on their own? But so for now, this year, we're getting it started, we're once a month.
So I'm, it says that so far, you've had five participants?
Yes.
Are you, how large are you looking for the parent group to be?
I don't know. Yeah, I guess I kind of envision it as like in any organization, you have a core group that sustains it. So, you know, maybe that core group is five or 10 or 15 parents who are really actively involved, coming to most of the meetings, making plans. But then there'll be other, I think it'll be a vehicle for other parents to be more involved. Like we do a field day at the end of the year. We'd love to have like some parent volunteers there when we do field trips. Maybe you can have parent chaperones. So like, we're hoping the Parent Leadership Council can be like a core group of like really involved parents, like a parent committee helping the school. But then they can also like, there can be more like loosely connected parents who like volunteer when you can, because we know people are busy.
This may be a question that might be too early to answer maybe. But you had suggested that some of the suggestions from that group were pretty good.
Yep.
I'm wondering if you could share any of the suggestions that you might plan on using moving forward?
Yeah, so a big, just, oh yeah.
I want to make sure that if it's too soon to, to share, I, I understand.
Yeah, well, no, there's one example that came right to my mind. So like one of the things you saw in the survey, a big topic was the communication to parents and families, right? And so we, that was one where I was like, well, what does that mean, right? Like that could mean so many different things. And so when we talked to the parents, there was like a clear consensus among the parents of the new sixth graders that we had not given the families as much communication as we should have about the experience for their kids coming in new. So they were like, we were nervous and anxious. What would our kid do on the first day? And I explained, oh, we had it very well planned out. They came in, we have people with a list of which homeroom to go to. And so all they had to do was come in the door and we basically had it from there. That's why we didn't send you more information. They were like, well, then you needed to send us that information, so we weren't worried. And I was like, perfect point. So that's like an easy win, easy adjustment. And then they also asked us, so we did a, we bring the kids in for like a stepping up day where they come and tour the middle school. They get a taste of middle school. And they're like, but you don't do anything like that for the parents. So could you come once to West Street? And they also gave, gave the feeling this school's hard for some of them to get to. So could you come once to West Street in the spring and once to Charlton Street? And just give a presentation to the fifth grade parents, here's what to expect in sixth grade. So like those were like a couple of examples of like easy wins for us that, I mean, you know, they're like, when it's presented to you, it's like, yes, what an obvious idea. You know, I'm embarrassed we didn't do it, but like that's why we need parent voice. We just have those blind spots because we're just, you know, we're working with good intentions, but we need parents involved.
Right, right. Thank you.
Yeah.
And then I was curious, the 20, so we went and visited the 21st century groups downstairs. I'm wondering how, is that the maximum number of students that you can have in the program?
So right now, we would, we would love to grow it. We have a grant from the State Department of Education for that. And so the grant we have covers 40 students. So like pays for them to have a snack while they're doing their homework after school, before the club part. It pays for a certain number of staff that's like right for 40 students. You know, maybe if this year goes well, then we could get more funding, we could get more students involved. Like I feel like we could have more students, but we need a little more resources. Because teachers like being part of it, but they won't, they wouldn't do it for free till 4:30 every day. So we need that funding. Yeah. Yeah.
Kathy, any questions?
Nothing right now.
All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
For visiting our school today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no chairman's announcements. I thought the meeting was exactly what we needed for chairman's announcements. So I'd like to thank everyone who presented today, all, everybody who came and listened. Adjourn. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Anyone opposed? Have a lovely holiday season. Lovely, lovely. And we'll be back in January with more good news.